Mr. Kerr.
President.
Mrs. Lieper.
President.
Dr. Rig. Dr. Schaefer. Mr. Schroth.
Here. Okay, thanks, Jared. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out this evening. On a bitter cold evening. We also have some board members and some public that are joining us virtually. And again, I'd like to welcome everybody to our uh to our event tonight. I don't have a board president's message. Um, looks like we have two for public comment. One is Ben Ford. Ben, if you would please. Yeah, please.
Thank you. Um, so Ben Ford, I'm a resident of Indiana Borough. I'm here to speak in favor of the LERTA motion you guys have on your agenda this evening. Uh, the LERTA is designed to be an incentive for development and repair to expand our tax bases. And so I hope you guys can support this. Uh, just a couple of quick details. That it, you know, the, the notion of it is that it, it would freeze a developer or someone does major repairs. Their taxes at the pre-LERTA um rate, so that, you know, in this case, the school district will continue to receive the same taxes that they have been receiving. Um, but having it frozen at that rate would be a financial incentive for someone to do a development or to do a major repair. Um, and at the end of the seven year period, when the LERTA lapses for that particular project or property, then the school district would see increased taxes. So it's a way to sort of grow the region's tax base um through incentivizing development and then all the other benefits that come with development in terms of jobs and um and using local resources. Um, so you, you continue to have your taxes, but you get a, an expanded base at the end of the whole project. Um, and this has been successful in other, other communities. And so I'm hoping that the school board will be leaders on this and adopt that today. Um, and then the last thing to be aware of is that as proposed, it only applies to the portion of the school district that is in the borough, right? So it's not your tire area. It's only the portion in the borough. Um, and you do continue to receive taxes on those properties during the LERTA period. So, um, thank you very much.
Okay, Ben, thank you. Uh, next is Ralph Ferraro.
Here I am again. Wish I had nice things to say. I uh felt it necessary now that the new board was seated to come and basically fill you guys in on the things that I've seen since I've been here. So um, you recognize me for being, I, I wrote it out to, to try to not berate you guys too terribly bad. Uh, most of you recognize me for my very critical, being very critical against your actions in the past. For the new members, my name is Joe Farrar. I have four young children and they're still subject to the rule of this board. I thought it necessary to highlight some of the things that I have witnessed here. Right at the beginning of this school year, I listened to the solicitor tell the board that they must mask the kids on the bus in order to not risk TSA funds. When I simply asked the board to tell the kids this fact, so they were not confused as to why they wore a mask on the bus, but not in class. I was met with disdain. So much so that Tom Harley felt the need to walk up on me in the dark parking lot. There were witnesses. You also went ahead, let me find where I am again. Tried to intimidate me to go away was what was happening. Deny it, i- if you will.
Joe, Joe, we, we don't attack board members.
You, you, Tom, I'm speaking. Thank you. Uh, he also told us that the encounter, the board's hands were so tied that we didn't really even need him. So if he could, you know, admit to that in front of all these other people rather than outside, that'd be cool. On another night, Walter, you called my name to come up and speak. But once you realized you made a mistake, you wouldn't let me speak. And then whenever I quipped that I was glad I was on your radar, I got a stare down from you. It was, that was. Uh, I also have witnessed the previous board vote to reduce graduation requirements for the health and phys ed requirements. Even though we have had an obesity epidemic since 2011. It's one of the risk factors for severe complications of COVID. Yeah, yeah, Education Board, right? Um, I've witnessed countless times as Mr. Vukovich stares at his computer, types away. As parents that are concerned show up and voice their concerns. Uh, he's yet to respond to my wife's email asking what happens when all of her sick days are used because she was forced to quarantine even though healthy. Um, I hope these are things that let you know why I have a lack of faith in this body. And here we are again. Even after a six oh ruling against mask mandates, petty tyrants rear its ugly head again. Guess the past mask bullying segregation lists in the class weren't enough to satisfy the beast. Now we are te- testing asymptomatic students. And surprised that cases are going up. Was there another expectation? Uh, guess I'm the only one that remembers there was a time when testing healthy people was called hypochondria. I heard it. I'm not gonna stop.
Thank you, Joe.
Now we're masking kids because of medical issue rising in the schools. Masking must therefore, hey, we waited outside. I've waited an hour before. I prepared comments. I'm not just going off the hip here. Not having the respect to let me finish. I mean, like, I'm right here, man.
Three minutes is your, is your limit.
Continue. I'm gonna continue. Back the gavel all you want. Now we're masking kids because of a medical issue. Masking must therefore be a medical intervention.
Time.
It's gray area. I get it. Gray area. So let's just allay any appearance of impropriety.
At this point in time, we'll.
Why won't you release all kinds of uh data showing the effectiveness of this masking policy? Two years into this, you know, parents just must, you know, have this disillusion that we have informed consent. We're gonna just ignore Walensky at the CDC saying that it probably never worked against any variant? Is this how we react?
Um, Muckavich should.
And Muckavich should made muted.
Or Randy O'Neal.
Yeah, no, they've all left.
No, they still need.
Who from the CDC said masks don't work?
Are you muted?
Could you please repeat that name of who's from the CDC said masks don't work? I'd like to look that information up.
I just went off at the school board meeting.
My order.
Did you pay for it? I, I to- told her twice, two regular, two regular waffles toasted and one not.
To the gentleman who was speaking, I'm still wondering who from the CDC recommended that masks did not work.
Um, uh, the disruption here, uh, but we're back uh into our regular meeting. And um, it looks like IAEA, ASB, SGA, or STUKA. We have a young lady here. Do you have anything to report? Okay, if you could use the microphone.
Hi, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Kennedy Conkle. I'm the president of student government at the high school. Uh, recently, we just concluded our fundraising for Teddy Bear Fund Drive, which we start in mid-September. And we really focused on it all of December. I just want to report that we raised $7,000, which is a number that we're really happy with considering a lot of our donations come from local businesses and many of them are still recovering from the pandemic. So that's a number that we're really happy with and really excited to be able to share that and uh have kids from IRMC benefit from it.
Okay, thanks, Kennedy. Okay, anybody from the other organizations? Nothing heard? Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple different things I'd like to go over, and I apologize. I didn't provide you with a copy uh beforehand. Number one, I'd like to recognize the tech ed program at the high school. Uh, they have been recently awarded by the International Technology and Engineering Education Association for having a program of excellence. So we're really proud of the work Mr. uh Mark Renn and Mr. Keaton Stantz have done here in the district to make sure our engineering program is one of the best here. Not only in our area and in Commonwealth, but also the country. I also like to thank Coach uh Brandon Overdorff. Um, he recently resigned after leading the program for four years. It's our understanding he is moving uh out west to be with his family, and we just want to thank him. As you know, they took him to a successful season last year in the playoffs. And we wish him nothing but the best of luck in his future endeavors. Also like to recognize the high school for their career readiness efforts under the leadership of Mr. Johnson and Mr. McElhenney. They were asked recently to present at the Pennsylvania Department of Education's Annual Standards Alliance uh Conference in Harrisburg. Uh, Mr. McElhenney, Ms. Stewart, and Mr. Brochus presented at Harrisburg on a such exceptional work being done in the area of career readiness, and I just want to recognize them. Additionally, um, and sadly, we just want to recognize we have several good people retiring uh from the district this year. And it goes without saying that there are going to be a big loss. You're looking over combined 153 years of service to the Indiana area school district. Now, we have till January 15th accept um additional retirements, but we just really want to recognize them. So in my newsletter, I included their pictures and their names, and it was really a great honor. Several little ladies who work at East Pike came over, uh, gave me a hug, and you could tell how deep and meaningful this place means to them and serving our kids means to them. And a little point of levity, Mr. President, um, the, you know, in the middle of their retirement where they're getting ready to uh retire and go enjoy their grandkids in the next chapter of lives. The three ladies were, were, if you need us, though, and you need us to sub, we'll be there. Um, that's the type of people you hired, and that's the type of people we have here in the district. So it was really bittersweet, a lot of great experience leaving, but we wish them nothing but the best. We expected this number um to retire, so we're right on with their projections, but I just really want to, you know, nothing could say putting the words in mon- the amount of help and leadership and care concern they have provided for our kids over the years. So when I send out the families, hopefully they'll, they'll be just as happy and appreciative as we are of the service that these individuals um provide to the district, but it's gonna be a big loss. And lastly, uh, I just want to congratulate the swim team uh for their accolades. Uh, the boys and girls swim team uh finished first and third at the West Allegheny Christmas Invite last month, and we just want to recognize them for their efforts and try to do everything we can to uh notice their efforts. And lastly, Mr. President, uh, we just want to recognize, you know, I think what happened today with our cases in our buildings. As you know, you approved the plan in July. That plan calls for universal masking if we set a certain number of thresholds in our district. And we did so. So we are following the plan that was board specifically approved and discussed throughout the summer months leading into the fall, and we're back at that plan. Our hope is with the mitigate mitigation efforts we have in place that the mask can be a short-term place. Um, but again, we are following our health and safety plans. I understand the stress and inconvenience and uh different emotions this places, these decisions place on people, good or bad. And we just want to recognize that, and it's hopefully that we can, you know, people can understand we're doing everything we can to keep our schools open. Uh, as you know, you know, with the lack of substitute teachers and if people are sick and can't come and feel these positions, it's a hurdle that we have to continuously monitor and um be prepared for. So again, everyone's grace and compassion, understanding is appreciated. Indiana is a great place filled with incredible people. And this is something we're going to continue to for uh go through and continue to do the best we can. But uh it starts with you guys, uh, as board directors. Being honest, honest, being open, being so transparent. Later on tonight, Mr. President, you will vote on the principles for governance and leadership, and there's a couple of different characteristics that go in there. One of them is working together in spirit of harmony, respect and cooperation. It's no, it's no secret that in these polarizing times, people have different opinions on what we should and shouldn't do with regards to mask and everything else. And the fact that you do it such dignity and grace and diplomacy is important, and it's an example for people to watch and people to mirror, in my opinion. What this world needs and possesses ability to dissent with dignity, and you do that. Even when you disagree with an idea or even you want to challenge something, uh, you realize it's not what you say, but how you say it, and you handle yourself in such grace or in such difficult times. And I know you don't need it that a boy, but I think it's nice once in a while, and I can always do that more for everyone, and I should do it more for everyone. But it also starts with all of you, because what you have to encounter uh to make some of these decisions is not worth your paycheck. Um, but you do a great job, and I'm really proud of the work you do, and I hope tonight uh you approve the principles for governance and leadership because it matters. And in dark times, this will lead us through what we need to do to make decisions that the best interest of our kids in order to keep our school so uh open, but also to continue to work together. And it's okay that we don't agree all the time. But what does matter is that we understand that we can dissent with dignity and that our principles must be followed by practice. And I would argue, and I can state emphatically that your principles are followed by your practice. There's not one time I call you at a crazy odd night or time and you're not there to respond to me, uh, give me the advice I need or give me the support I need. And more importantly, the support these kids need. We are blessed to be in a great place. Indiana is a special place, and it's amazing that it's just not, it doesn't happen like that by uh happenstance. It happens because there's good people who care and have a common mission. And right now, times are tough. You turn on TV, you don't have to look very far for criticism, but what you do have to look very far for people have the resiliency to push through the darkness and to see that there's good times coming, and you've done that. And I want to applaud all of you. It's been a pleasure serving you the last three and a half years. Um, almost four years, and you're an amazing group of people, and uh, Dr. Ray cannot be here tonight. She suffered the loss of a loved one. And she allowed us to explain that. But in despite her, her own personal tragedy, she's emailing and texting us and asking, you know, following up on email. That's the type of people we work with. Jim Schaefer and I are texting at midnight trying to go through different things. Walter and Julia, I bother you every day. Jacinda, I drive you nuts too. I know that. Uh, Mr. Harley, I, I put you through hack every Monday, first Monday every month with four hour meetings. But you come here for the work, and I can't thank you enough for what you do. With that, Mr. President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thanks. Um, Mike, uh, we are down to number two presentations. It sounded like you were starting on a roll there, so uh.
Oh, yeah, that, sorry. We have a presentation too. I apologize. Um, in honor of January being um School Board Director Month, we just have some simple certificates, certificates here asking you and thanking you, and most importantly honoring you for the work that you do. It sometimes go underappreciated, undervalued until it's needed the most, and you are incredible people who do place the best interest of kids forward. So Mr. President, I'll turn these over to you. If you want me to pass them out, there's only a small amount. It's really up to you how you want to proceed.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, uh, Mike. Um, and then for the other board members, uh, uh, if you come in to sign the card, um, uh, there'll be a um uh certificate here for you as well.
Uh, first on the list, when I open up the folder, uh, Mr. Walter Schroth, thank you for your time and dedication to strengthening public education in our community, sir.
You're welcome. You're welcome, Mike.
Next on the list is uh Madam Vice President, Julia Chomarki-Kukuro. Thank you for your service as well. Ms. Blank is not here. Next on the list will be Mr. Harley. Uh, Jacinda, Mr. Kerr, Ms. Lieper, I have yours here. Dr. Rig. I have yours as well. And then finally, Mr. Schaefer. Uh, thank you to everyone for all the service that you put in for our community. Thank you for always being there for our kids. And thank you for everything you do to make Indiana a better place. Um, I have grown immensely. I've become honestly, when I say as a better father, a better husband, well, I think a better husband. Ask my wife that. Um, and a better leader because of you all, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do for our kids.
You're, you're welcome. You're welcome, Mike, and thank you as well. Okay, we're down to the item number three. Approval of minutes and agenda. May I have a motion, please? Okay, it's been moved in second. Uh, questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, board reports. Um, Indiana County Technology Center. I guess that's me. Um, I did send out a report to the board. I kept bringing it with me.
I take back all the previous comments.
Yeah. Okay, I, I will make that available to the press um 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 tomorrow. Okay, um, Aaron. Tammy's not here for our Aaron report. We were starting off with a bang here. Uh, okay, Tom, um, extracurricular.
Okay. We had a brief meeting on uh January 3rd. I was telling her, would I jump in when I say something is not right? Um, we had a donation to the district of $11,000. Um, and an anonymous donation. That was uh for uh K to five, the best notifications. And school nurses. And uh, we thank the donation for donated curve from the bottom of our hearts. Uh, we talked about grade configuration, um, and we discussed the next steps with SSI. Uh, we'll conduct another session with the board on January 17th, which focuses around transportation committee meeting. Please, uh, I don't attend them. Uh, we're coming into the end of this sequence. We talked a long time about the mental health workers and supporters. Uh, we have an opportunity of hiring four additional people for an extra year and a half. Committee recommends that we look that ahead. I believe that's all the uh most to do that. Uh, we heard from the IU 28 executive director.
Tom, you, you may want to use the mic.
So, sorry, can we do it now? Okay. Do you want me to go back?
No.
We heard from Dr. Mattson and and Mrs. Sheasley about the 21st Century Grant. Um, the committee recommends that we, we, we proceed in partnership with the IU 28. Um, we have reviewed the uh MOU with the building substitutes, working with the A I IAEA on the details. Um, and being able to work that through with, with our, with our uh faculty union phenomenal partnership on that. Um, we talked about um um the committee to be served, um, we talked about um IU 28 uh PIL pill course for 12 people. Um, and the objectives and coaching the administration, a cyber adult audit program. And ESRS funds will be used to pay for these services. I believe those are um on the agenda, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Um, we had uh, for some reason, baseball and softball wants to go south um for uh for um spring, spring fall. And uh, they, they sent a letter requesting that, so um, committee certainly supports that. Um, we covered briefly some non-agenda items. Um, the committee can uh supports a continued partnership with uh Dr. Mark Greenberg of the I, of the um um, and the pill course and the collaboration with him. Um, Mr. uh, uh, Mike Worthington from the ICTC principal was here discuss the diversified occupation positions at ICTC and the impact and how they interface with um with our pathways. Um, and the committee uh looks forward to hearing more reports in the future of that program. Um, we had uh, Mr. Banning had a uh um, showcase celebration with multiple districts, looks local nationally from California and Ohio that want to visit uh us to see what we're doing in the area literacy. And the committee supports that. Uh, we had a um really long presentation for Mr. Henrik um about uh the scope and study of social studies and sequence. Um, the um interesting thing to me on that was the um the sequence started in, in K and worked through 12. It seems like um we're cutting across um um, the um, a lot of, a lot of old hobby, hobby teaching lines that we're, we're working to to get the social studies courses um and, and the um civics courses um um integrated into, into these classes. Um, I think um we have one change with the um junior, uh, making a junior requirement for, for civics. Um, that is being finalized, but we're making great progress on that. I um shortchanged uh Wade McElhenney and, and his group um on the um dual enrollment offerings, which I, I, I heard had reached 50, 50 now. And that's, that's courses in the high school at IUP, Manala Wishes and um WCCC and online combinations. But 50 courses and they're put together a really phenomenal um um package of, of um on, online of, of, of what they mean and how they go and um how they nest to each other and how they interface with our courses. So um, I'd like to invite him back and, and maybe Mr. Henrik won't be quite as long-winded on the social studies thing, and we can spend some time on that. Um, but.
He's just following your lead, Tom.
Yeah, I, I, I'd really like to make sure that everybody understands what's, what's really, we've really kicked the door open on this. On that, that there's, there's a phenomenal range of courses, and I believe more to be added, but uh, but uh really really exciting to see what's happening on the dual enrollment. Um, wow. We had, um, also had a brief discussion about the career readiness pathways. Again, not quite long enough to understand exactly what's going on on that, so I invited them back. Um, we want to talk about the increasing female participation in athletics at IHS. And um, the committee recommends a uh, the field hockey survey to be committed by a white township. Have we done? Okay, how do I do?
Wonderful, sir.
Okay, he has to say that. Okay, so I have a few motions. Um, I think I can take them all. Is there any objection to taking them all as consent? Hearing none. Um, I move that the um board accepts five two, five three, five four, five five, five six, five seven, and five eight as submitted.
Second.
Okay, Jacinda's second, uh, Tom's motions.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, questions, comments, discussion from the board? Mike, anything you'd like to uh, uh, point out in, in, in any of these uh seven motions?
Uh, no, sir. Just a quick couple of words, though, if you want. Um, we're excited to be working with IU on the 21st Century Grant. We're excited to be able to have the ability to try to get some building subs into our district in order to help uh fight the combat, combat uh COVID. But we look at the call-up numbers, our ability stays open, depends on a staff we have available. Uh, the whole entire country is going through a sub shortage. So that's something that we are going in the right direction to make sure we have the appropriate help and supports in place to the best that we can do to keep open, and as well as the uh different other partnerships listed. I think we spoke to them a great deal at the committee meeting, meetings, and I appreciate the board's support.
Okay, further questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motions carry. Okay, Jacinda, you're next.
Okay, we had a policy and personnel committee meeting this evening, and everything that was on our agenda is on the agenda for voting this evening for the board. Um, quickly, the uh Pennsylvania School Board Association's Principles for Governance and Leadership were discussed. Two MOUs were discussed, one for building substitutes and one for a certified school nurse uh temporary position. A long-term substitute for a Spanish position was discussed. Um, hiring an administrator assist, administrative assistant at Eisenhower was also discussed, and um we talked about the movement, moving a lateral, or not a lateral, but an internal transfer of Mr. Edmondson from the junior high to the Horace Mann principal position. We also talked about reapproval for the lead, the literacy lead teachers. And then the last three items on our agenda had to do. And then the last three items on our agenda had to do with the Audit and Finance Committee. And, um, they were quickly the LERTA program that Ben Ford talked about in the public comment. There's a motion about the, um, the index and, uh, 4.3%, which I'm sure that Julia will explain or Jared. And then we talked about the ESAR, um, funds that have come from the government that, as part of the, um, The COVID funds to help us get through this. We talked about building substitutes, Specialized instructional workers and the cyber program audit for which those, for those things, uh, the funds will be used. So, Julia, did you want to say anything now about The, the items that were on there from the Audit and Finance, or do you want to wait until we discuss?
Um, I can go, I can go over them now. Thank you, Cindy, for letting us pony, uh, trail, tail onto your committee. Uh, we did discuss, uh, the, uh, LERTA program and the committee Um, was unanimous in, uh, uh, supporting this motion. And Ben Ford did a nice job in the comments of explaining about it. Uh, we also talked about the, um, The index. So, the vote tonight is our first foray into the budget process for this fiscal year. And, um, we can raise taxes up into 4.3%. I certainly don't see the need for something like that at this point, but, um, we have a choice. We can go above that and go through certain rules or not. So the committee is unanimous And wanting to stay within the index, uh, with the condition that, of course, we continue to budget at a 0% tax increase. So Jared, do you want to say anything about that motion at all?
I think you did a wonderful job, Madam Vice President. Uh, just to clarify again, this is not by any means tonight voting for a tax increase. This is just setting the limit As to what the board could consider in the future as we work through the budget process.
Yeah, and that decision will be made till June.
And it is required by Act One.
Yeah.
Yes, you have to take this vote by the, um, by a certain deadline, which is at the end of this month.
Yeah, that is correct. Um, we have a number of, um, oh, and then we had a long discussion on the ESAR funding expenditures, uh, which was productive and, um, We're all very supportive of, um, it's, it's sort of a beginning, uh, using the ESAR money towards social and emotional learning and specialized instructional workers, building substitutes, and cyber program audit. And then finally, there is a motion, long-awaited motion about the, um, uh, band uniforms, um, Or the, no, the musical instrument replacements. And that's been one of Tom's long, for years, Tom's been talking about this. So Tom, tonight, we've been putting it off. Um, and also, we had a wonderful donation. Jared, do you want to talk about that, these gift cards that were donated?
I think, uh, Mr. Harley kind of touched on it at his committee meeting regarding the $11,000 donation, anonymous donation Um, to the district that the grade levels will be using for much-needed supplies. Um, here over the next month, we'll be working with them to get those supplies on hand. So we appreciate the donation.
Very nice to get. Yes, thank you. So whoever anonymous is, thank you very much. And that's it, Mr. President.
Okay, um, any further questions, comments, or discussions? Um, Cindy, I think it's time for you to make your motions.
Yes, and I do have a lot. Um, what I'm hoping to do is do A few of them on a consent basis. So if you would look at 6.4, 6.6, 6.7, 6.8, 6.9, and 6.10. Would we be able to do those on consent, or do you want me to pull them out?
Uh, say those, say those again, please.
Okay, any, any motion that needs to have a name filled in, I'll go ahead and do singularly, but For consent, I'd like 6.4, 6.6, 6.7, 6.8, 6.9, and 6.10. They all have to do with, um, resignation of support staff, Mentor teachers being appointed, and that's an appointment that we do regularly, request for leave of absence, an IRMC wellness contract, Uh, reapproval of literacy grade level lead teachers, and then the principles for governance and leadership.
I'd like the principles of, uh, leadership and governance, uh, separated, please.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second your motion, Cindy.
Okay.
Okay, it's moved in second. Questions, comments, discussion from the board?
I would just like to thank, um, Mr. Donald Tripoli and Joshua Hippel for their service to the district.
Okay, Jewel? Anything, Mike, on your end?
No, no, sir.
Okay, further questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, those motions carry. All right, Cindy, go ahead with the rest of them.
Okay, motion 6.2, employment of support staff. That based on the recommendation of administration, the board employs, employs Donald Tripoli as a custodian effective December 13th, 2021. Dakota Harper, effective January 10th, 2022. And Eric Heil, effective January 11th, 2022, At an hourly rate of $12 per hour, subject to a 90-day probation period and receipt of all required paperwork be approved. And I'd like to do part B also. That, that based on the recommendation of administration, the board employs Anna Twig As an administrative assistant, effective January 11th, 2022, At an hourly rate of $13 per hour, subject to a 90-day probation period and receipt of all required paperwork as approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? Mike or Jared, anything you want to add? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next one.
6.3, resignation of professional personnel. That the board accepts with regret the letters of resignation from William Warwick, senior high science teacher, Aaron Snyder, East Pike Elementary, Susan Brown, East Pike Special Education, Beth Mock, East Pike Nurse, Melissa Bender, Eisenhower Elementary, And Jill Kaczabowski, Ben Franklin Elementary, Due to retirement, effective the last teacher day of the 2021-2022 school year.
Okay, Julia's second. Okay, Mike, anything you'd like to add to that?
Just like to echo what I said earlier, what a loss it is to have these people, uh, retire over 150 years of service to the district. Incredible people. And, but we wish them the best on their retirement. They earned it. And again, uh, these are the type of people are so selfless. When I was talking to three Of the ladies, um, they said they'll come back and sub if they need us, and I'm sure others would as well, but that's the type of people you hire here. They're proud of the work that they've done, sir.
I couldn't agree more. Questions, comments, or discussion by the board?
Same comments for me. With regret, we have to accept this.
Okay, nothing else heard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
6.5, long-term substitute assignment. That based on the recommendation of administration, the board employs Dylan Reinhardt As a long-term Spanish substitute teacher, beginning January 24th, 2022, And continuing until the last teacher day of the 2021-2022 school year At a per diem rate of $250.41. Instructional one, step one, be approved pending receipt of all required paperwork.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion 6.10, Principles for Governance and Leadership. That the board adopts the principles of governance and leadership established by the Pennsylvania School Board Association.
Second.
Okay, Terry, second it. Um, the reason I requested that this be held separately Is that I think it's, this is not something we have to do every year. But I think by doing it every year, it kind of helps set the tone for the rest of the year. Um, for the benefit of the, of the press and the public, I would also like to point out that for a number of years On that closet door, we have kept a copy, a little large copy of those, uh, same principles of governance and leadership. And I think that bespeaks the value that the, this board, uh, places on those, um, um, Uh, on those, on those values. Further comment, questions, or discussion from the board? Mike, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I mean, I'll repeat what I said earlier. Our, our principles have to be followed by practice, so that things, items listed on that list are things that you follow through every day as a collective board. Uh, and at times, you're forced to make very difficult, tough decisions, especially during that in the middle of a pandemic. And you do it with grace, you do it with dignity. Again, I think the biggest lesson we could teach everyone, it's okay to dissent, but dissent with dignity. And you lead by example, and I'm proud to work for each and every one of you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. All those in favor of, uh, of approving this motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Last one, Cindy.
Motion 6.11, administrative transfer. That the board approves the transfer of Kevin Edmondson, junior high assistant principal To Horace Mann principal, effective February 3rd, 2022, at a prorated salary of $95,000.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Edmondson has big shoes to fill. As you know, we have a transition her, going on that building, but I spoke with the outgoing principal. Her and I had a conversation. She recommended Kevin as a great, uh, replacement. We looked at the body of his work before here and during here, and we, We concur with that agreement and, uh, respectfully request that you support this motion.
Okay, thanks, Mike. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed? Motion carries. Terry?
Yes, sir. Two things. We did have a, uh, special Building Grounds Transportation Committee meeting, December 13th, Which is, uh, after our last board meeting. We had one topic, and that was the administration, Mr. Vukovich presented the grade reconfiguration option Dealing with two K to three elementary buildings and one four to five building. And then the last thing I'll mention, just a reminder, and you'll cover it again at the end of the agenda. We have a Building Grounds Transportation meeting next Monday, January 17th, starting at 5:30. Very important topic on there, which is again, is the grade reconfiguration. So, That's all, Walter. Thank you.
Okay, Terry, thank you. Yeah, that'll be a good meeting. We'll all look forward to it. Julia, Audit and Finance.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, typically, we would have a little voice vote on this, um, budget, but we didn't.
Uh, a, um, A roll call. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, so I would, um, I think we can take his consent, 8.2. It wasn't anything highly unusual. Um, 8.4, 8.5, um, and 8.6. I think we can take his consent.
That's fine.
Okay, so I moved those. I moved, um, 8.2, 8.4, 8.5, and 8.6.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second on eight, two, four, five, and six. Uh, questions, comments, or discussion on, from the board? Yeah, Tom?
Yeah, 8.4, um, we've been trying to get this started for, seems like a decade now. Where these, uh, instruments that are damaged are slowly replaced. Um, and rather than do it as one big chunk and have bring instruments across the district, we're going to do it as, uh, As, uh, instruments, um, are damaged, as you can be replaced, are replaced in time. Um, and, um, this is part of our, uh, ongoing, um, um, capital budget. So I, I appreciate getting this finally to the point where we can put new instruments in these kids' hands.
Very, very good, Tom. Okay, further question, uh, Cindy, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to say again to whoever anonymous is, thank you very, very much for the donation. It's something that, in a, a time of stress like we have now, It's, it's nice to see that somebody out there in the community is willing to give a little bit to help everybody out. Thank you.
Well-spoken, Cindy, well-spoken. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on these motions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those, those opposed? Motion's carry. Okay, Julie, 8.3.
I move that in accordance with the provisions of Act One, the Taxpayer Relief Act of 2006, That the resolution that the board will not increase any school district tax for the 2022-23 school year at a rate that exceeds the index of 4.3% As calculated by the Pennsylvania Department of Education be approved.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on this?
Just to reiterate, this is not that we're increasing taxes 4.3%. This is just, it's the limit and sets the road.
And, and again, required by law.
Are we going to have a, what you call it?
Yeah, roll call. Okay, Jared, go ahead with the roll call then. If there's, what, just a minute. Is there any other further questions, comments, or discussion from our board members? Nothing heard? Jared, go ahead with the roll call.
Cindy Broad?
Yes.
Julia Trumarki-Cucuro?
Yes.
Mr. Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeper?
Yes.
Dr. Schaefer?
Yeah.
Mr. Schroth?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, we're down to, uh, item nine, closing. Uh, no discussion items. Is there public comment on agenda items? Nothing heard. We had some enclosures. Our next board meeting will be a special meeting on January 24th for general purposes. Uh, our next committee meeting will be Buildings, Grounds, uh, Transportation on the 17th, as Terry mentioned, at 5:30. We had an Audit and Finance Committee, uh, scheduled for the 24th at 5:30. And we also had an executive session, uh, this evening and, um, Mike, let me see your cheat sheet there. Uh, we discussed labor relations, lawfully privileged information, and school safety and personnel. So, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, any, any opposition? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.